Good morning. Let's go to order the special F C meeting today. We will have the morning session until twelve forty-five. We will have two sessions in the morning. The objective of the special meetings is to study the appropriation bill for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty in order to make sure that the funding requested will not exceed the purpose they are earmarked for. Let to remind members that you must ask direct questions related to the budget. If you want to refer to any replies, please quote the serial number on the top right-hand corner. Say, for example, F H B F E zero zero one. If you do not have the chance to follow up on your written questions, you can do so by asking written supplementaries or raise questions at the panel. I will depend on the number of members asking questions in order to decide on the speaking time. Please now press the request to speak button. I welcome the secretary for food and health and her team. This is a session on food and environment hygiene. We will tackle health in the next session. Over to you, secretary. Morning, chairman, honorable members. The F H Bureau is committed to ensuring food safety and environmental hygiene as well as promoting the sustainable development of the local agriculture and fisheries industry. In the nineteen, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty estimates, about nine point one seven billion is earmarked for recurrent expenditure in the policy portfolio of environment and food, representing an increase of about eight hundred and seventy million dollars or ten point five percent over the previous year and accounting for two point one percent of recurrent government expenditure. The government will refurbish public toilets managed by the F E H D in phases, and we are going to do that for two hundred and forty public toilets in the five years to come, incurring a total expenditure of over six hundred million dollars. The F V H D will take into account the maintenance condition, utilization rate, public views in determining priorities for refurbishment. F V H D also improves the ongoing management of public toilets, conducting a deep cleansing on a regular basis. Step, they will step up inspections and monitor contractors' per- performance and compliance with, uh, con- contracts. Having obtained support from the Yunnan D C and Islands D C for new public market projects in Tingshui Way and Tingsh- Tongchong New Town, we are now pressing ahead with engineering and technical studies. We are also identifying sites for public markets in Shangguanou and Ku Tong North N D A. As to existing markets, the overhaul of Aberdeen Market is a pioneering project under the Market Modernization Program. In addition, we are planning a fundamental overhaul for three other markets and refurbishment and minor improvement works for at least three other markets for commencement progressively within this year as far as practicable. The F V H D has set up nineteen dedicated enforcement teams to strengthen enforcement action against cleanliness offenses and plans to set up additional teams this year. On applying technologies, the F V H D will continue to introduce automated cleansing technology and equipment for trial at different venues. The department is also conducting studies to improve the design of the O V trap and use night vision and thermal imaging cameras with artificial intelligence to monitor the extent of rodent activities. For pest control and prevention, the F V H D is testing the effectiveness of a new mosquito trapping device and a new rodent trapping device driven by pressurized gas. The C F S of F V H D is following up the audit report released late last year and recommendations of the L E G C O P A C and actively reviewing its daily operations and overflow and workflow to implement specific improvement measures in various areas. The C F S has also set up a dedicated team to upgrade its I T systems in phases starting from the end of this year with a view to providing more support to frontline staff and enhancing the efficiency and effectiveness of its food safety work. To increase the supply of public niches, we are implementing the district-based Columbarium Development Scheme. The projects at Wongnai Chung Road in Wanchai, Changchui, in Tin Moon and Wahap Shak in North District will be completed this year, providing about two hundred and five thousand new niches, about twenty-one thousand of which are expected to be open for application in mid twenty nineteen. The private Columbarium Licensing Board is speedily handling a hundred and forty private Columbariers, three hundred applications for specified instruments. To enhance promotion on green burial, the F V H D opened a new Garden of Remembrance in Kuichong and launched the Central Register for Green Burial in January this year. The government attaches great importance to animal welfare and management. We are preparing to conduct a public consultation on reviewing the existing legislation related to animal welfare. We'll then propose amendments to the legislation, including introducing a concept of positive duty of care into the law and reviewing the existing maximum penalty for animal cruelty. To enhance the financial support to animal welfare organizations, we'll allocate an additional one point five million dollars this year to support their work in promoting animal welfare and adoption. We strive to implement the new agriculture policy. Funding for the construction works of Agri Park Phase One is supported by L E G C O. The P W S C will continue the consideration of the funding application next week. Construction works is expected to commence by the end of the year if funding is approved by F C. We are also conducting a consultation study on agricultural priority areas so that fellow farmland could be rehabilitated for agricultural use. The Sustainable Agricultural Development Fund has approved seven applications. It also provides funding direct for farmers to acquire farming equipment. The total commitment is eighty-eight million dollars. As for fisheries, the Sustainable Fisheries Development Fund has approved fourteen projects with a total commitment of seventy-seven million dollars to improve aquaculture and help fishermen acquire modernized capture or culture equipment. In addition, we'll conduct environmental impact assessments for designing new fish culture zones and issue new marine fish culture licenses to promote the development of aquaculture. We are pleased to see that the agriculture and fishery sectors both benefit direct from S A D F and S F D F. While other support measures are bearing fruit, with the concerted effort of the trade and the continuous support of the government, the agriculture and fishery sectors will be able to explore new areas for long-term sustainable development. Chairman, my colleagues and I will be happy to take questions from members. Thank you. Thank you. First, Tony Chair, four minutes. Thank you, Chair. Like to follow up on my question. Two four one. This is about refurbishment of public markets. The secretary says that they can work on two hundred and forty toilets in the next five years. You can refurbish them or you can redevelop them altogether. I hope that you will not award the entire project to just one contractor through one tender. Please give more chances to the S M Es. And I'm not saying this for the first time. As you know, in overseas countries, the public toilets are designed very well. If more opportunities can be given to professionals to try out their designs, especially the, the young ones. Mister Yu Si Wang has also asked a few questions, including two three three, two three six. They are about cleaning of public toilets. And secretary, exactly because of this, the design must not only take care of the appearance, but also the use, the daily maintenance and repair must also be considered at the design stage. So please do not be lazy. Do not just give it to one tenderer because the toilets would all look the same. Secondly, public markets and the rental rate. One nine three. It says that in the past, in the last five years, you have closed three markets with a high vacancy rate and you may close another two. But sometimes these markets are very well located. You may close the market, but then what will be the building used for afterwards? You may sometimes do something, okay? The utilization rate is low and you close it. And then what happens afterwards? And you may only think about it after closure is done. But please, you must be comprehensive in planning for the closure of the market and plan for its use because it may be infested by rodents. It will bring about more trouble. Even if the utilization rate is low, perhaps you should just go on using it instead of leaving it to waste. There will be a hygiene problem that will be created. I hope you will have comprehensive plans. Please do not do your work in a piecemeal manner. Secretary. Thank you, Mister Chair, for your question. On public toilets, I will say a few words and I'll defer to the director. Our plan is to consult stakeholders and users so that our public toilet refurbishment scheme will really attend to public needs. I believe the director has plans. We have the two billion M M P mo- Market Modernization Program. We thank you for showing concern about closed markets. Now I'd like to defer to the director, Ms. Vivian Lau. Public toilets. The director does not have a microphone. Thank you. The member says we should allow professionals to help with the design. We agree totally. This time around, the F S has given us six hundred million dollars provision. Together with A S D and E M S D, we have held meetings and we have mapped out the direction. Our task would be also to conduct workshops in order to take on board views of stakeholders with regard to the appearance, facilities and uses of toilets. And these stakeholders are professional designers, academics, users, and even the, the attendants at public toilets. We'll follow up, uh, this regard. Uh, please switch on microphone for Mister Tony Zi. What about, uh, closed markets? Can you briefly tell us how you're going to deal with those closed markets? Chairman, whenever V H D closes a market, we first consult the district council for sure. And what, oh, what will, how will you use those closed markets? Well, early next year, we closed two markets, one in Chingking White in Chingman, another Shaqiu One Market in the Eastern District. I think Mister Zi is asking, uh, how are you going to, uh, use those, uh, vacant premises? Well, the two markets, uh, the district councils concerned have given us some suggestions. That's exactly the problem. You only consult people after you've closed down a market and the, uh, site is now vacant. I hope you can have more thorough planning and think of, uh, what are you going to use it for before closing it. Professor Joseph Lee, four minutes. Question number twelve. One nine, uh, so is about a reduction of our salt and our sugar in our diet. Now we're talking about prepackaged food. In twenty seventeen, there was encouragement of lowering, uh, the sugar and, uh, uh, salt tang, uh, uh, labels. And however, only two hundred and thirty food items have joined your scheme. Now, if you really want people to, uh, use the salt-sugar label scheme for prepackaged food products, now it's been almost two years, but only two hundred and thirty uh, products have joined the scheme. Do you have any, uh, performance indicators? Uh, for instance, the number of products that will join? Because it's important because people may inadvertently taken, uh, food of high salt and sugar content. So do you have a comprehensive plan and how you're going to encourage merchants to, uh, use the label scheme properly? Secretary, thank you, Mister Professor Lee, for your question. With regard to the, uh, salt-sugar label, label scheme for prepackaged food products, well, it's only one of the measures for us to lower the, uh, sugar and, uh, salt content in, uh, food. The Responsible Committee for Reduction of Salt and Sugar in Food has proposed this measure for public education. So we want customers, uh, to have access and have choice of low-sugar and salt dishes. As regards prepackaged food products and the label scheme, well, we have just started. And we need the cooperation of merchants. And, uh, the work is ongoing, but it's not an easy task. We will continue to take forward our plan. Perhaps the food, uh, the center for food safety can brief us on the progress. Doctor Ho. And the campaign to, uh, promote salt and sugar reduction. Well, in the label scheme, we encourage the industry to label the salts and sugar content of foods, uh, helping consumers to choose. And we've also got a page on the Facebook on Hong Kong's Action on Salt and Sugar Reduction. And the page has, uh, well received by the community. It has got, uh, quite a high hit rate. And we've also got publicity campaigns earlier this year. There was, uh, the promotion of, uh, culture of eating low-sugar and, uh, salt-contained food. And we hope that the industry can provide healthy dishes and, uh, restaurants for consumers to choose from. Chairman, my question's not been answered. Part C is about salt-sugar label scheme for prepackaged food products. Uh, Doctor Ho talked about the restaurants. I think Tommy John will laugh. All right, uh, you talked about, uh, the food, uh, the center for food safety. It's been two years and only two hundred and thirty products have joined the scheme. I'm talking about the prepackaged food products, but not the dishes served at restaurants. Yes, please. Uh, you were interrupted. Professor Lee, please go on. Thank you for giving me time. My question has not been answered. In part C of my question, I'm talking about the salt-sugar label scheme for prepackaged food products, not dishes served at restaurants. The secretary talked about, uh, the principles and the center of food safety, uh, beat around the bush. I'm like to know whether it's because you don't have enough money. If you don't have enough money, tell us and we can secure resources for you. It's been two years, only two hundred and thirty prepackaged food products have joined your scheme. So would you say that the scheme is, uh, ineffective? And how and when are you going to review the effectiveness of the scheme? How come it's so strange? Is it because it's too early in the morning? Or is it because you've taken in too much salt and sugar? You failed to answer my question. Professor Lee, let me try to answer your question. Uh, for the label scheme, we are now discussing with a few, uh, sizable food manufacturers. They have promised to improve, uh, the formulation of prepackaged the food products and also the sugar and salt contents that covers beverages and, uh, instant noodles and also soups. So discussion is ongoing, but we're quite confident. Uh, these are two manufacturers, uh, of, uh, big scale. And I, we believe the number of products will continue to rise. And as for a review, for sure, we will conduct a review in due course. And if, uh, the response is, uh, not so satisfactory, we'll continue to discuss with manufacturers. Mister Tommy John, uh, time is too limited and I have too much to ask. But I must spend time to respond to what Professor Lee said just now. Why, why do you want to approach restaurants? I am a bit baffled. They don't even have enough people to work. You give them, uh, to choose and this customer order, uh, lower, uh, sugar dish and another, uh, less salt dish. And I think, uh, the chefs and also, uh, the waiters are will, uh, find it very difficult. And, uh, people in Hong Kong enjoys, uh, the highest longevity in the world. Are you worried that I don't know what to eat for the sake of my health? I think you've got it all wrong. If people come in and complain that the dishes are too salty and they don't come again, don't you think that I would do something about my dishes? And people complain that, uh, my dishes are too sweet. They won't come again if they say, uh, the dishes, the deep-fried dishes are too greasy. They don't want to order them. Then spring rolls would not be such a popular dish. So I think you've got it all wrong. You should work on customers. Uh, you should not bother the restaurant given that we are operating in such difficult conditions. Now, I'd like to talk about public toilets. It is easy to, uh, work on the hardware. It's all about software. Now, for restaurant toilets in restaurants, the most important thing is to have a good ventilation. If it is air-cooled, it's good. If, uh, it is, uh, odorous is no good. It's important to have someone to clean it and, um, the floor should also be clean. All right, a short question and I demand a short reply because I have two more questions in mind. Secretary, thank you. Mister Zhang, for salt and sugar reduction, for sure, we have, uh, conducted publicity campaigns among the public. Perhaps it's not good enough and we will, uh, continue to work on other fronts. Restaurants are willing to join our campaign. Of course, uh, they've been, uh, coerced, forced or lured into joining a scheme. Who would like to join voluntarily? For public toilets, perhaps I can defer to the director for, uh, our plan. Yes. For, uh, software aspect, because we've talked about the hardware already, we totally agree that daily management has everything to do with the design. So at the design stage of new public toilets, we will make them user-friendly as far as possible. For software, we've got, got four goals. We have to ensure that, uh, the floor is dry and clean, odor-free, no, uh, stains. And, uh, items that require repairing will be fixed as soon as possible. Uh, that's enough, director. I'd like to know whether you have got resources to increase manpower. You don't have to give me such a long answer. I have a few more questions, uh, for the secretaries. Now what about live chickens from the mainland? Oh, we have to pay so much for expensive mainland fresh chickens and for chilled chickens. Uh, the prices are rising. So what are we going to do about it? Secretary. Thank you, Mister Zhang, for your question. I believe you're talking about live chickens from the mainland. Yes. We are continuously discussing with the relevant authorities in the mainland. Mister Zhang, you have to understand that this is a commercial, uh, business. I mean, it's a commercial thing. And as far as I know, they have no live chickens for supply to Hong Kong yet. We'll continue our dialogue with them. And as soon has, as we have anything, uh, from them, we will resume the supply of live chickens from the mainland. Mister Zhang, uh, please, uh, do not deceive our constituents. I think it is more about, uh, behavior between you and the main authorities. It's not about a business decision. I think it's about, uh, the relations between yourself and also the, your counterpart in the mainland. You should work harder. And please do not bother our restaurants about, uh, salts and sugar content in dishes. Mister Stephen Ho, yes, I do understand. When you have nothing to eat, perhaps it's not the opportune time to talk about healthy, a healthy diet. Understand that a secretary would like to promote a healthy diet, but, uh, let's talk about live chickens first or rather wild boars. Many members have asked questions about this. Their positions are maybe different or similar. Population of wild boar is increasing. Question oh oh nine. In part C, I asked the number of prosecutions and also the fines. I understand that, uh, you use the Country Parks Ordinance for feeding of a wildlife. And, uh, if, uh, that ordinance doesn't apply, then you have to use, uh, the municipal services or the legislation for public hygiene. Now, in twenty eighteen and up to February twenty nineteen, you've got only fifteen, uh, cases of imposing a fine and the average fine was only one thousand dollars. But, uh, in fact, uh, for littering in the public, the, uh, penalty is one thousand five hundred dollars. So I'd like to know what will be the way forward with regard to this matter? Well, you, uh, talked about E N B, the question. For E N B, we don't have, uh, that question with us, but, uh, since, uh, this director for A F C is here, I will defer to the director. For feeding of wild boars, we rely on the protection of wildlife, uh, ordinance, cap one seven oh. At certain destination, at certain designated places, feeding of wildlife is prohibited and we will take enforcement action. And in other places, we rely on the, uh, legislation for littering and we rely on F V H D to enforce the ordinance. Yes, there are many members of the public feeding our wildlife and we have stepped up enforcement recently. At, uh, designated no-feeding zones, we have, uh, special operations in March. We had, uh, prolonged operations. Uh, we caught a dozen or so cases of feeding wildlife. Also at black spots, we have stepped up communication with the F V H D. We are also stepping up publicity and education. We'll continue to enhance our work in this respect in the coming year. Thank you. But the first part of your reply only repeated my question. I know you operate two ordinances. But then, the no-feeding zones are just like no-smoking zones. You can still penalize them for feeding the wildlife. However, the average fine was one thousand dollars instead of the littering offense one thousand five hundred. So can you be more forthcoming and make it a deterrent? Well, I don't know whether you will believe this, but then you say one of the reasons for the increase of wild boars is that people are feeding them. But don't you think that the penalty is too low so that it is not a deterrent? Will you consider amending the law? Chairman, according to the protection of, uh, wildlife ordinances, um, the highest penalty is ten thousand and the penalty is meted out by the court. Well, I understand, uh, but the actual penalty is only one thousand. Even from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, the average was eight hundred to one thousand dollars. Either you write to the judiciary to ask them to do something about the penalty guideline or you can increase the maximum penalty in the law. Can I have a brief reply? We can talk to the D O J about this. If we think the fine is too low, perhaps we can appeal at the court. Miss, next one, Miss Rebecca Chan. I'd like to talk about question zero eight nine. From twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen, you had seven oh two, seven oh two and six nine nine persons working on N D rodent and N T pest work. They have to tackle mosquitoes and rodents and you have not increased the manpower. But as you see, there is a, a huge rodent problem in many districts.
But as you see, there is a a huge rodent problem in many districts. You go to markets and estate parks, you can see rodents having parties every night. It is disappointing that you say you would use night vision camera or thermal camera together with artificial intelligence in order to do monitoring. I thought you would just put an end to the rodent problem. But instead of that, you are only monitoring the activities of rodents. Go to Kowloon City, every handset of district councillors will show you how fat, how active the rodents are. We know they are active. Don't spend money on monitoring their activity, the money should be spent on catching them and eliminating them. And about outsourcing contracts, your expenditure has been increased from two hundred and eighty million to three hundred and twenty-one million. Have you reviewed the effectiveness of such anti-rodent contracts? How how come you spend so much money, but you have not improved community hygiene at all? Thank you, thank you for the questions. With regard to pests, mosquitoes and environment hygiene, in this year, we are giving seven hundred and fifty-five million dollars to the F E H D. And we are enhancing the territory-wide cleaning program. Miss Chan asked about monitoring the activities of rodents, but that is only one part of our work. We are also testing out new pressurized gas rodent elimination equipment. Therefore, we are also working on trapping rodents. As for the contracts, maybe I can defer to the director?
Chairman, at the F E H D, we don't only work on our own to tackle the rodent problems. We have to rely on contractors who engage their own staff. In twenty eighteen, we have about seven hundred staff members at the department. And we have eighteen hundred contract staff members. This is about manpower. As for N D rodent work, we understand your concern. If you look at the use of trapping devices and the using of baits, and you ask about effectiveness, well, actually, the numbers have gone up in recent years. Say, for example, talking about trapping devices, starting from twenty sixteen, thirteen thousand. Twenty seventeen, fourteen thousand. Last year, sixteen thousand rats were caught. And as for the using of baits, the numbers have also gone up. I'd like to follow up. You have said that you have spent more money, you have got over seven hundred million dollars. But then you have caught only like one or two thousand rats more every year. In Pasi of the reply, where I was asking you, in the last three years, what have you done with the various districts with regard to location, manpower and how many rats have been caught? You are telling me that you don't have the figures. You don't even know the situation in the districts. Uh Miss Chan's mic is off. You said thirteen thousand in twenty sixteen and then sixteen thousand in twenty eighteen. What about district-based figures? I want you to tell me whether you are effective in any districts. And in Pasi, you are telling me you don't keep the figures. So how can you monitor the effectiveness of your work? Director?
Chairman, when we say we don't keep figures, I think we were talking about the district-based funding, because we don't have that concept. No, I was asking about locations and manpower, like sixteen thousand rats. Is it that three hundred were from Kowloon West? I want to know the details. When you do anti-rodent work, what matters is that you catch the rats. Can I say a few words? Well, maybe we have misunderstood the question. If you want to ask me about district-based rat catching, well, in an other question, I have answered that uh can I refer to question one, three, four? And we have tabulated district-based anti-rodent work results. Next one, Mister Shi Katron.
Morning Chair. I'd like to talk about contract staff. That's question one hundred. First, meal break pay. In that question, the administration says they don't keep the figures because it is not specified whether the mealtime is paid. But actually, on the twenty sixth of February this or twenty eighteen, at the manpower panel, I have already asked the bureau to include mealtime pay in the contracts. The official said that that could be considered. However, a year has passed and in this question, you are still telling me that you do not keep any figures as to whether mealtime is paid in the contracts. So this is not just Miss Chan's concern. In fact, in many other matters, you do not keep figures. It's just like camels burying their head in the sand when they are scared. So my first follow-up is, starting from twenty seventeen, together with Miss Liu Si Lai, ex-member, and also Doctor Fernando Jiang, we have asked you to keep figures, but you are still not doing it. Why not? Why don't you incorporate mealtime pay in your standard contracts? Why don't you require contractors to give you that record? Second, toilets. Also in the same question, you say that you have two hundred and sixty-four toilets and the contractors will provide attendants, out of which there are two hundred and thirty-one with an attendant room. But in fact, you can only put a broom, a mop and some miscellaneous items. It is not ventilated, it is very stuffy, it is not hygienic. The director said that at maintenance, you will keep it dry, stain-stained free, odor-free and also good maintenance. I'd like to ask whether you can add two more standards. One, when you have six hundred million dollars for refurbishment, you should do something about the extremely small attendant room and also its ventilation. Director or director?
Or secretary? Chairman, I'd like to say something about contract workers. Then the director can attend to other issues. If you remember, the Labor and Welfare Bureau has a task force looking into improvement of contract staff, remuneration and welfare. And certain improvement measures have been announced. We believe the administration will continue to be watchful about the situation of contract workers, including their wages. Director?
Chairman, the mealtime pay. Indeed, when we call tenders, we do not specify how this should be done. It is up to contractors to propose. And under existing laws, and also in the standard employment contract formulated by the Labor Department, there is not such a requirement. We can follow up with the L D on this. As for toilets, whether there will be an attendant room? Well, not every toilet is provided with attendance. If there are attendants, then where circumstances permit, meaning if there is space, we can add an attendant room if there is none now. And if there is an attendant room now, we should improve the provision. Uh there should be a reasonable space for taking a rest. There should be ventilation, illumination, and there should be a fan, for example. Doctor Helena Wong.
Chairman, I'd like to respond to paranoia of the speech of the secretary on food safety. You say you will follow up the recommendations of the legal P A C and actively review your work in different aspects. But in fact, it is quite empty. What are the specific measures that can effectively improve food safety with regard to food imported into Hong Kong through various channels, say by air or by sea and on land? I'd like to know whether you have got enough resources for such initiatives. And also in question zero one nine, I asked about the government chemist and how it can enhance its efficiency and also its ability in ensuring food safety. And this is about the government laboratory. You said you have found a site and then you said the district council has a view. What about that view? And I asked you when you can complete the enhancement of the government lab. You only said as soon as possible, but can you be more specific about all these?
Thank you. In twenty nineteen, twenty, there will be the creation of thirty-five civil service posts at C F S. And we have an extra twenty-five million dollars provision to review and implement improvement measures. Doctor Wong, you remember, they are actively upgrading their I T system. If we want to do uh tracking at source and we want to do better food safety work, this is quite essential. And they are working very hard on this. Also, in the audit report, there are many recommendations. Some have been implemented, some will be implemented. Can I defer to Doctor Hou Yong Yin to tell you more? And also, there are internal guidelines and workflow for frontline staff which have to be improved. Can I defer to Doctor Hou? Thank you.
Under my leadership, uh the C F S set up a working group in view of the recommendations made by the uh P A C and the Director of Audits Report, will review our guidelines and a code of uh practice. And then um the P A C and uh Director of Audit pointed out that there were inadequacies in the implementation of our guidelines. And so we're going to review them to make them clearer. We will start monitoring and management of self-training as an important element as well. We will review our demand for manpower and our establishment. As the secretary said, we will have another thirty-five civil service posts and extra twenty-five million dollars. We will consider the uh recommendations of P A C to see whether extra resources is needed. So is twenty-five million dollars and thirty-five extra posts sufficient for you to implement the recommendations for improvement by the P A C? Yes, we're able to deliver part of uh the uh work. And for the rest, we will have to review our manpower and resource requirements. And what about the uh food safety laboratory and the government laboratory? Regarding the government laboratory, can I defer to uh Mister Xin or rather uh Miss Xin, government chemist, to answer? Now, uh we had another fourteen point seven million dollars last year for operation of uh the government laboratory for food safety. And we created four civil service posts covering a professional and supporting staff to uh support the work of the C F S for protecting food safety. In Jiangguan, we have identified a site. Last May, we consulted the district council, which uh recognized the work of the C F S. But there were views from the district council as well. We are now discussing with the bureau and relevant departments such as the A S D. And we are uh amending our suggestions. And we hope to get back to the district council to discuss with it as soon as possible. I hope we'll be able uh to uh start the construction of the new complex A S A P. Mister Gary Fan, number two four oh. Uh cases of fine involving um those that breach uh the um uh the um ban on bringing too many baby formula out of uh town. In twenty sixteen, there were three thousand three hundred and seventy-nine cases of fine totaling twelve million dollars. Twenty eighteen, uh the number of cases rose to three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five, a fine total forty million dollars. In February, the government announced that the ban would remain. But I'm worried that looking at the rising trend of the number of cases and amount of fine, it goes to show that paral traders have already got used to the uh ban and penalty. Uh perhaps the profits they make uh have well exceeded the amount of fine and they have uh uh absorbed the fines as a part of the operating cost. So I'd like to know whether the government assess the reason for the high number of cases we have. And in view of the situation, will it tighten the ban? Will it raise the uh level of fine and even uh metal imprisonment sentences? And the second part of uh my question is, number of cases with imposition of fines ended up in default of fine payment, as well as uh determine fines in default. And what document of identity were they holding? Without such information, we cannot have a full picture of the gravity of the situation so that we can introduce targeted measures. Thank you, thank you, Mister Fan, for your question. Uh regarding uh the import and export decorations in twenty eighteen involving baby formula. Now, we uh are, we have an ongoing review and investigation and we have a committee to uh look at the supply of baby formula. Our main concern is uh supply. And we will also see uh the effectiveness of the scheme or whether it should continue. Mister Fan has noted the figures, so have we in our review. So we believe then uh fine, I mean, I mean, the ban should continue. Whether it should be further tightened, well, uh we will keep track of the figures. And if we need any uh crackdown operations, we will discuss with other departments in working out the strategy. My question is, uh now you intend to uh keep uh the current arrangement. Is it because you have the view that supply is uh sufficient? Or are you of the view that the fines are not at an unacceptable level? What parameters do you have for making a decision to tighten the uh control? I'm not talking about uh as simple as just keeping it as it is. Secretary, of course, our main concern is supply. There are different uh situations when it comes to the supply chain. The overall supply to Hong Kong is sufficient, but a certain districts uh the um purchasing habits and sites of mothers in buying baby formula may change. So in our overall review, we will consider the whole situation. So uh we um the uh outcome of our review is to keep the status quo. Miss Holden Chow, thank you.
Uh my question relates to oh oh five, number oh oh five. It was a question asked by me. It's about uh environmental hygiene, rodent control in particular. I asked whether the government would consider using high-tech equipment for dealing with rodents. The reply uh says that they plan to spend one says that they plan to spend one hundred million dollars. But there is really little about new technology. With experience in rodent control in the past, in places like Tongchung, for instance, there was once a rodent infestation and FHD staff were asked to help. They were very helpful. They did a number of things, but I'd like to ask whether they can do even more. FHD colleagues are still using rather traditional means. For instance, they look for rodent holes, implanters, and then they may place traps at certain locations. That's a traditional way of rodent control. My question is whether there would be additional high-tech equipment to identify the holes and dens? Because it's quite challenging for FHD staff to locate them one by one. Of course, if we use high-tech equipment, they can work much faster. So I'd like to know whether high-tech equipment can be used to tackle the problem. So it is just a question and I'd like to express my views. I understand that next to Tongchung MTL station, a public market has been proposed. I think I have said this to the secretary a number of times. People don't want the site to be too close to residential developments. So we'd like you to identify an alternative site perhaps next to the three sixty cable car station. So please address the question about rodent infestation. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chow for your view on the proposed Tongchung market. With the support of the district council, we're now undertaking a feasibility study. As regards rodent control and new technology, I understand that all districts are concerned about environmental hygiene. In addition to providing more manpower and resources, the use of new technology to make our work more effective is a focus of our work. So for sure, we will do that. The director of FEH may want to supplement. I know they are trying out different technologies to see whether they are effective. It's just that you may want us to be more expeditious. Sometimes, you may not know that they are testing new equipment and technology. In fact, they are working on them. And as for pest control and rodent control, yes, we attach significance to new technology, not just monitoring. May I have some extra time? Thank you. Mr. Chow talked about rodent control. Now, our strategy is to cut down their source of food and their trade and also their hiding places. We will are using a night camera to trace them, to trace their harborage and passages. Now, where do they appear? Now, it is important that we fill their harborage and their holes. In the past, we focused on public markets, but now we have applied this technology in back alleys. So whenever we find the trace of rodents, we will use new technology. And we're now using a non-toxic baits. It is claimed that they're more attractive to rodents. If in our traps we can use baits that are attractive to rodents but not poisonous, then I think it would be useful. And we are also using A twenty-four. It's a new bait. It is a pressure-pressurized gas equipment. But the preliminary conclusion that is not too effective. The technology may work overseas but not in Hong Kong with our unique conditions. Mr. Shu Gajin, Mr. Holden, Mr. Shu Cafe. Well, Hong Kong is a free market. We have a free economy. When the control of baby formula was imposed, you promised to compile a report. Now, in ninety percent of the drugstores in Hong Kong, you can easily purchase a can of baby formula. If it's out of stock, you just walk another five minutes and for sure you can find another drugstore to buy one. And if mothers are worried that they cannot buy baby formula, then they can order online or by phone and then within forty-eight or seventy-two hours, the stock can be delivered to our local drugstores. Given that RAI will be gentler. All right, secretary. Given the situation, you're still not removing that order. If it is not out of concern for populism or political considerations, one of the reasons for not dispensing with the control or order. Thank you. We understand that Mr. Shu as well as the Liberal Party are very concerned about that matter. And so we are now conducting a continuous review. We will ascertain the state of supply with the suppliers of baby formula. We have a dedicated working group to do that. We'll try to understand the purchasing pattern and locations of mothers buying baby formula. The situation is acceptable now, but because of the ban, I think that is why the situation is acceptable.
But then if we remove the two-ten rule, we don't know whether the situation will remain the same. So I'd like to reiterate two points. The review will be ongoing. If the situation will improve, certainly, we can, sorry, okay, I understand that because I only have four minutes. I heard that you say you will continuously review the situation. But then what phenomenon do you have to see before you would remove the two-ten rule? Mr. Shu, I'd like to say that with regard to export figures, in fact, the figures are going up. You can rest assured that sale of baby formula, and I'm not just talking about retail, is not affected at all. So we'll continue to review the supply and the demand from local mothers and their shopping habit. We'll continue to review these. If we should detect any particular change or if there are particular measures, we will inform you immediately. I only have twenty seconds, Chair. We can't really cover all the questions in four minutes. I'd just like to say that this is not just about money. It is about justice. It is about free economy. So you do not, you should not just react to populism. Do not just step aside if someone shouts at you. That's not fair. The secretary has heard you. Mr. Roy Kwong, thank you, Chair.
We are always very gentle in asking questions. First, secretary, I'd like to thank you for the Garden of Forever Love for abortions of less than twenty-four weeks gestation. I'd like to thank you for this. And then I'd like to ask about zero six five and figures of euthanasia. In twenty eighteen, it was an alarming figure. You killed over one thousand dogs and three hundred cats. We are talking about lives. We are concerned about animal welfare. And I'd like to ask you about the latest progress of the animal welfare law. And also, when you make laws to protect animal welfare, can you do something in parallel and that is to review euthanasia? You are using a million dollar every year to kill animals. This is not working for animal welfare. So can you let us know the latest progress of the animal welfare law? Thank you for the question. Our work on animal welfare is not only done by the AFCD, which has always worked very hard on this aspect, but as you know, Mr. Kwong, we are reviewing existing legislation. We will be conducting public consultation so stakeholders can put forward their views. Then, we will propose amendments, including what I said, and that is to introduce the concept of positive duty of care. And people have also been talking about penalties against cruelty to animals. Therefore, we will be reviewing the maximum penalty in the law. Can I please defer to the director, please? About euthanasia of animals. If we talk about dogs and cats, we have been trying to suppress the euthanasia figures in recent years. We have been hoping to do rehoming for these animals. We will step up our cooperation with animal protection agencies. We are giving more subsidies for rehoming promotion and welfare work. But this year, it is a little bit particular. It seems that the number of other animals has also shot up. Let us say that in twenty eighteen, because of the avian flu outbreak in Mong Kok, we had to cull over two thousand birds. Well, sorry, we don't have more ti- a lot of time. I can see those figures in the question. But I'd like to ask about the timetable for making the animal welfare law. And my concern was euthanasia. You kill one thousand dogs out of a hun- one thousand two hundred you caught and three hundred cats out of five hundred you caught. So do you think you can review the, your work on euthanasia while you make the animal welfare law? What about the timetable? Well, the timetable is such that we will start public consultation very soon after that. We'll collate the views collected. Then we will propose amendments to the law. And we'll then report to the panel. Well, one more word. If you conduct public consultation and if a lot of people talk about euthanasia, can you include it in your scope of review, director? We only euthanize animals when there is an absolute need. We must have regard for the health of the animal and also public hygiene. As far as practicable, we'll avoid treating animals in that way. But then there are different reasons for us to have to euthanize certain animals. You may need to wait for another round. Mr. Ray Chan, thank you, Chair. Euthanasia is euthanasia. Don't talk about human or a human way of treatment. Don't try to make it sound less cruel. Euthanasia is the deprivation of lives. Please refer to question zero three four, a question by Eddie Chu. Now, the standards and procedures for deciding on euthanasia or rehoming. You say if there is a chip within ten to twenty days. If there is not a chip, at least four days. I hope you can publicize this. So pet owners will know that the chip can save the life of their pet. If an animal is lost, it makes a huge difference, whether it's four days or twenty days. Well, cats are not microchipped now, but I will encourage pet owners to microchip, microchip their cats as well. As you know, recently, there was this dog who accidentally boarded a container vessel and it came to Hong Kong, but it was euthanized immediately. You said in your reply that the four-day standard does not apply to illegally imported animals. We did not know about that. And those people who were concerned called me up that night and I said, usually it's four days. If you can identify the owner, you please do it quick. But then, before the call ended, news had it that the dog was already killed. You say that it was illegally imported. As if the dog had broken the law, so you had every reason in the world to kill it. Secretary, even for people, you have smuggling, abducting or losing your way. Well, if it is illegal immigration of course, you need to have penalties. But then what about people who just lost their way? The procedures are set by you. Shouldn't you improve them? Bureau Secretary, you first said that you just followed the procedures and no one did anything wrong. But then on Facebook of the AFCD, you said that you would pause and think. What do you mean? Is it going to be a rule by man, meaning that you can make your decision whatever way you like? What will be the standard? How can you be more human? Secretary, thank you, Mr. Chan. On the one hand, Mr. Chan asks to and enhance publicity on microchipping. I think that is an excellent idea. The AFCD can pay attention to that when they do publicity work. As for your view on the Thai dog, I can defer to the director to say something. On the one hand, we think that there is room for improvement. But on the other, it is not just illegal importation. It came from a country with rabies, so there was more concern. I believe the director would like to update you on his thinking. Director. Generally speaking, there is a high risk attached to illegally imported or smuggled animals. If we can arrest the smuggler who abandons the animal or if the animal doesn't have an owner, we will not wait at all. We will deal with the animal as soon as possible. In this particular case, when we were given this dog, at that time, the ship owner gave up the dog. And there was no talk about an owner or the origin of this dog. We only knew that probably it came from Thailand, a place with a high incidence of rabies. So we euthanized the animal. And then it was only later that we were told that the animal might have an owner. So as the member said, if the dog just lost his way and if the dog had actually had an owner, then perhaps we could have dealt with it alternatively. Therefore, the review is along this line. Mr. Yu Se Wing.
Thank you, Chair. Two three two. On government funding for improving public toilets. The administration said that you would conduct public workshops to listen to views in order to further improve facilities. Apart from workshops, you should also steer the way for improvement. Personally, I feel that you just view public toilets as any kind of hardware, but
very often you can apply high-tech to toilets as well. You can have big data and smart facilities also used in public toilets. Now, I don't know whether you can consider doing this in tourist areas or where there is a high utilization rate. Can you use intelligent facilities and maybe you can collect more data for use as big data so we can improve our international image? Please do not just follow your old ways. Second question. Two, three, six. About the treatment given to cleaners. You said there would be five improvement measures, starting from first of April. Well, actually, they have been implement implemented. But from where did you get these ideas? What is the basis for these improvements? Did you listen to contractors? Or did you take reference from cleaning arrangements in shopping malls? Because I think the shopping malls are doing much better than the public toilets. Is there any further room for improvement? So we can even give better treatment to the cleaners? Thank you. About refurbishment of public toilets, Mr. Ye says we should apply new ways and technology to do the software. As I was saying, Mr. Yu. We are looking at using innovation and technology in different areas of our work. So now we have new resources for refurbishing public toilets. We are minded to do a good job. We will consult stakeholders so we can get their views. I believe the F V H D will also has its own thinking and indicators in order to decide on the priority.
The utilization rate and also the location will be some of the considerations in designing on priorities. I defer to the director now. Thank you. Regarding the use of technology, we are now doing that already. First, on collection of data in the past, we had to count manually. But now we have artificial intelligence cameras to monitor the utili- utilization rate so that we will know the utilization rate at specific periods of the day and the distribution of utilization rate at different times of the day. We're now doing that for all the toilets and all toilets have their special characteristics. And in tourism attractions, where the utilization rate is particularly high, we're conducting a feasibility study. For instance, at Lan Kui Fong, we'll consider introducing air conditioning and dehumidifying system. And at the peak, at the gallery, we have got the soap and also the blow dryer placed at the same location so that we will not no longer have wet floors. And and at the public toilet at Sai Yi Street, Mong Kok, we are going to use ozone in flushing water for sanitization and removing the odor. At the peak and Chuan Wan, there will be a few toilets where we're going to use oxygen for deodorization. So we are using technology to to decompose the odorous particles to carbon dioxide and water. Thank you.
Dr. Prisela La. In Paris, thirteen and fourteen of the secretary's speech is about animal welfare. Some members asked about missing animals at high figures of euthanasia of animals. I truly believe that compared to two decades ago, we are now a much more animal-friendly community. Small pets, such as dogs and cats, are very important to elderly singletons and young couples. These pets are regarded as family members. I am a pet owner. Two days ago, my dog was bitten by another very big dog. It was a serious accident. And we wanted to find a hospital, an animal hospital in Hong Kong. And after consulting many friends, I went to the animal hospital in Shangshai Po, which is run by City University where I teach. So it's really a coincidence. I worked for many years to set up, to help to set up the animal hospital. Yes, the hospital has got very advanced facilities, but I believe not many people in Hong Kong can afford the service. And it was an emergency. I had to pay a deposit of thirty-two thousand. I tried to bargain with them because I'm a staff member. But I believe the hospital will make a loss because I had to pay a deposit of thirty-two thousand. A more thorough examination, another thirty-five thousand dollars. And I think full treatment will cost very likely a hundred thousand dollars. Now, the hospital is a teaching hospital. I think all pets will die and some elderly pet owners and even young people may need counseling if the pets pass away. And sometimes your pet might have encountered an accident and it's not yet time to give up yet. Because when a pet is young, it has been a companion of an elderly owner for many years. So they don't want to give up the pet, but elderly members of the public will not be able to afford such high treatment costs. It was entirely an accident. It was not my fault. So I'd like to know whether the government can provide more support for that. There now finally we have veterinary school. So I'd like to know whether you can provide more intervention and employ the staff of the school to provide emergency services. I know there is another hospital on Hong Kong Island with excellent service, but it's very common for people to keep pets, even not so well-off families keep pets as companions. So can more resources be provided? You talked about animal ambassadors and homing of stray animals, but what about medical needs of animals? Thank you. When it comes to animal welfare, referred to by Dr. Leng. Yes, amendment to our legislation and we're going to consult the public. I'm sure stakeholders will give us a lot of views. In addition to the animal hospital run by City University, SPCA and also some animal welfare organizations also have hospitals. And we do provide them with subvention and we have raised the level of subsidy this year. I think AFCD will consider how to enhance the services you talked about based on the needs. Perhaps the director can supplement. Thank you. Regarding assistance or subsidy to animal welfare groups, the focus is on rescuing stray dogs, stray animals, and we also provide financial assistance in neutering of stray animals for homing. And for pet owners, I think we rely on owners to patronize veterinary clinics in Hong Kong. There are plenty of them, but depending on the treatment required and the type of operation, the expenses can vary. Yes, the pet owners are to foot the bill. Please speak on the microphone for Dr. Prisela La. Can you reconsider this issue? If we want to be an animal-friendly city, I think we have to look at services that elderly members cannot afford and please consider giving subsidies. Mr. Ho Kai Ming, question number one, two, six. It's about the number of outsourced workers. In twenty eighteen, there were nine thousand four hundred twenty-nine of them. And then in a paper for Lajko in twenty sixteen, it was ten thousand five hundred. And then eleven thousand odd for the budget in twenty sixteen. Now, if you look at the number of rodents, I don't know which question is relevant. In all eighteen districts, we have caught forty-four thousand three hundred seventy-four rodents. Whereas in nineteen ninety-eight, according to a press release by the government, for regional council alone, that is for NT, they caught twenty-nine, twenty-eight thousand five hundred in the whole of NT in one year. So there are nine districts there, so each district caught. There were fifty-six thousand altogether. So we have caught ten thousand rats less compared with the regional council days. Now we have a higher population. So we've only caught four thousand four hundred thirty, forty-four thousand odd this year. We had ten thousand five hundred staff members in twenty sixteen, but only nine thousand four hundred twenty-nine in twenty eighteen. If you say that we're all out in cleaning the city, what is the basis for so saying? We've paid more, but we don't have more workers and we do not see any effect. What can we do to ensure that members of the public will not be plagued by rodents? F V H D frontline staff has done a good job. I'm not blaming them, but I think I would like to know whether there is sufficient coordination among government departments, including the HD, and when we have posts in the streets. Well, one member of the public sector, Ms. Chan Yen Hen, they said that back in twenty oh three, the state of cleanliness was much better. Well, the C's wife, then, Mrs. Tong came out to appeal the public to clean up the whole territory. Is it that we haven't put in sufficient effort into this subject nowadays? Thank you. We have been giving more and more resources to F V H D for environmental hygiene matters. Perhaps the director can supplement in this regard. Of course, Mr. Ho quoted some figures, and I think the director can also clarify. But I must say that first, I will will continue to increase resources to do a better job in this regard. And when it comes to rodent control, F V H D has got strategies, including territory-wide campaigns and also targeted small areas where more resources will be put in. Director. First manpower. Number of outsourced workers has been increasing in the past few years. In eighteen, nineteen, we had over thirteen thousand outsourced workers. But in one, two, six, question one, two, six, is that nine thousand four hundred twenty-nine? Yes. When members read our replies, sometimes it's eight thousand, sometimes it's nine thousand, sometimes over ten thousand. It depends on the question itself. If you talked about a cleansing workman, it's true that we don't have so many. We may include a security guards and also operators. In eighteen, nineteen, we had eight thousand seven hundred odd. That is a cleansing workman. Does that is not excluding attendant, toilet attendants. So the number has been increasing in the past few years. We have increased manpower resources. Members may query the effectiveness of our work. We are taking a multi-pronged approach. For rodent control, I think it will be more effective if we put together the district staff of our department and also other departments in the district. We should target a certain areas. Rodent control. Yes, we are trying out new technology. Whether we can use a non-poisonous baits to catch more rodents. And these baits are more attractive to rodents. We will step up our efforts. Thank you. Miss Eddie Ju, Mr. Eddie Ju. Thank you. I've got two questions. One relates to cleansing workers. Question one, two, six. The question asked for figures of workers and also the amount of refuse collected. Now, in Taipu, Timun and islands, the number of in-house cleansing workmen accounts for over thirty percent of the total number of workmen in islands, oh, up to thirty-five percent. But in urban areas such as Central Western, Southern and Quuntong, Central Western Mong Kok and Quuntong, the figure dropped to eleven or thirteen percent.
I don't understand whether each district applies different policies so that there is such a difference. And at the same time, is it that the in charge of a certain district has the free hand to enhance the ratio of department staff? Secondly, about the refuse collected, I can count that in six districts or in eight districts. You cannot let me know the amount of refuse collected by in-house staff, but only by contract staff. Why is that the case? And secondly, when you do have a number to give, I don't understand. Say, for example, Shangshai Po. In Shangshai Po, you have ninety-four in-house workmen or sixteen percent. But then the refuse collected by in-house staff is two times that collected by contractors. Why is it that you have fewer staff, but you can collect more? Secondly, about trap, neuter and release policy. Mr. Gary Chen asked in question twenty-three about this. I mentioned many times in the past that there are many NDAs in the NT, like in Wangzhou, in northeast NT. In fact, before people are evicted, you should go into the community to do T N R to control the number of animals. But from that reply, I can't see you have any intention to give new provision for doing such in NDAs. Can you add that target in? Thank you for the question. I can ask the two directors to answer your questions. F H D on cleaning workers and refuse collected. The director can explain how staff are deployed. I believe this is done on the basis of the different needs in the districts. The second question can be answered by the director of A F C. Chairman. Let me comment on the manpower. First, Mr. Chu asked. In the districts, the number of in-house cleansing workmen and number of outsourced cleansing workmen have different ratios. Sometimes there is a historical reason to this. The proportion of the different types of workers, that is not decided by districts, but this is deployed by headquarters. At the F H D, if we talk about street cleansing, seventy-five percent of the work has been outsourced. Mr. Chu compared annexes one and two and the figures therein. I'd like to explain, actually, we are not talking about the same type of work. If we talk about cleansing workers, we are talking about street cleaning, including sweeping and washing the streets. But then, refuse collection is done under another contract. Therefore, with regard to refuse collection, we also buy the surface of the driver and the R C V and also workmen working on that R C V. And the refuse amount is calculated on the basis of one R C V instead of the refuse we collect from streets. In annex two, we show that in certain districts, we have not included the amount of refuse collected by in-house staff. Well, that goes to show that the entire work in certain districts has been outsourced. There is no more time. Another member, Dr. Chang Chung Tai. Thank you. I don't need a response on the following two points because you have been very bureaucratic in giving replies. First, about euthanizing animals. What is most ironic is that today there is news about a cat boarding a container from Shenzhen going into Canada. But Canada did not kill the cat. The cat was subject to quarantine. And then it was given a name and the public are asked to give donations to supporting the cat in Canada. This is in the news today. So it's very ironic, isn't it? You say in Hong Kong that you care about animal lives and animal welfare, but then your department has been very bureaucratic and calcified in your way of work. Secondly, you say you are promoting rehoming, you are giving some kind of provision, but it's so meagre. One point five million dollars. You say you can promote rehoming with that. Ms. Priscilla Leng said that she spent nine hundred thousand dollars on curing her own dog. Aren't you ashamed to put down a figure of one point five million dollars here? And you must understand abandonment of animals is not always due to the fact that the owners don't want to keep their pets. It's just that people are compelled to abandon their animals. In Kootong, in Hongshui Qiu, you are developing the areas. And when you do household registration, you don't include the number of animals and how many village cats, village dogs are there. And then you remove the villages, so people are rehoused in public rental units, but they are no longer allowed to keep pets. Do you want them to cook the animals and eat them? This is because you are developing so many areas and people are forced to abandon their pets. Coming to my basic point. This is about cruelty to animals. We are always only talking about two points, one enforcement and prosecution. Even if the police has a dedicated team, well, you should do better. And also, the cruelty to animal ordinance is outdated, definitely. Including colliding with animals in the streets. I know you are poised to review the law, but what is your administrative mindset? It should show some cultural change. With the upcoming amendments, you can really consider modeling. After Taipei, you should set up an animal protection department. This is the understanding of the sector. Because every time there is a case of cruelty to animals, we don't know what has happened to it afterwards. In twenty eighteen, there was a cow that had its vizerals removed and hung on a tree. And two days ago, there was discovery of cow limbs that were cooked. And then in Mong Kok, there was a dog that was beaten with a golf stick. And our people, civic passion, filmed it. It was deliberate. It was the beating of a dog with a golf club. So we cannot pursue the police for working on these cases. Okay, your time is up. The next session must start at ten fifty-five. So I don't think we can allow a second round. Dr. Elizabeth Quat has just come in. Well, give the mic back to Dr. Chang. You have spoken for four minutes and you have not asked a question. Well, the question is so complicated. Well, never mind. Carry on. Just like to know, apart from amending the laws, you can say do something about the penalties and you can set up a small team in the police. But can you at least consider having a dedicated government department which will coordinate all cases and administration and follow-up and communication with other departments on animal welfare? We can't depend on A F C D. Secretary.
Thank you, Chair. We have heard Dr. Chang clearly. And that is why we are going to start consultation on animal welfare laws and we will be amending the laws. Dr. Chang mentioned penalties. That will be a main point. And we are seeking to raise the maximum penalty. The A F C D has been communicating with other departments and it will continue to enforce the law. Last one, Dr. Quat. Because we have the next session in, at ten fifty-five, please be brief.
Thank you, Chair. Our environment hygiene is deteriorating. We go to estates, we can see rodents running around. I witnessed large rodents and small ones in a group. They jumped out from dustbins. And I was in Tai Che Hang together with F H D staff and I picked up a rat once I arrived there. You have been doing hard to try to catch rodents. You have spent a lot of resources and you want to tackle the problem head-on. Well, we are talking about building a smart city instead of setting up night cameras, night vision cameras. Well, that may be useful, but Hong Kong is such a big place. If we want to develop a smart city, we have to work together with the community. We can't always depend on government staff looking for rat holes in the districts. Perhaps you can consider making use of smart technology. We can tackle rodents and public toilet hygiene and the entire public can help you. You can set up an apps. So it's a platform for the public to tell you where they have seen rats and also dirty toilets. When you have the data, you will know which district has a serious problem. So you can send your resources and manpower accordingly. So you can set up your different equipment accordingly and so you can tackle pests and rodents and public toilet hygiene. You have seven hundred million dollars a year, but even if you have a billion, you may just be going inside circles. Why don't you go for smart technology? So you allow the public to be engaged. If I receive complaints and then I call you up and I take a team of your staff, say, to Tai Che Hang to catch the rats, that's not efficient. And if you are only passive and reactive, you don't give a good impression to the public. So why don't we go for something else? It's not expensive or difficult to set up that platform. But the public can be engaged. Well, I understand this. I have talked to government staff. They say it's a lot of pressure because if we receive a report, but we do not tackle it right away, we will be taken to task. But if there are data, you can explain why you give a certain priority to a certain area. In fact, you will be assisted. Okay, I will be brief in replying. We can certainly use I N T to help with environment hygiene and rodent control. The F H D will continue to look for new ways and we will be wiring resources to do this. I believe Ms. Quat has been heard by the F H D. And in terms of environment hygiene, we must maintain it. So apart from using technology to catch rodents, we must step up public education, particularly with regard to back alleys used by restaurants. Even if we have a lot of resources and manpower catching rodents, if the public don't do better, we'll still have rodents. We'll then therefore adopt a multipronged approach. That's the end of the session. We'll reconvene at ten fifty-five.